Thank you all for coming. Kim, can you give us a roll call real quick?
No, no, sorry. I show everybody present with the exception of Mayor Cowan, who is off lighting a fire.
As such, I am the president of the city council and presiding over this special work session today. New business on our agenda, the review of the city's actions regarding haunted house on Sedona Drive. And as Kim just mentioned, Mayor Scott Cowan is actually on a fire in Central Oregon, part of the incident management team. And all these fire marshals was planning on being here, I'm not sure she's gonna make it there on a second alarm while in fire out on the west side of Albany. So she may not be able to make it either, so busy, busy time right now. So with that, just wanted to provide counsel with an overview of what's transpired with the haunted house on Sedona Drive. Been a lot of some comments on Facebook and things regarding that. And just wanted to kind of give you an overview of where the murders are now. So approximately a year ago, became aware of a, of the haunted house with some signs and advertising for charming. That rates, that kind of brought to our attention and on that, and for both us from a land use standpoint and more so from fire and from a substance crisis. So as you saw in the letter previously, Matt and Laura Bracklitz, the both in fire going out. We expected the premises and had some discussions with the owners and good discussion. And then the event was allowed to go on as long as there wasn't a charge for emissions at that point. We have previously received some noise complaints on it. But every time that we had looked into those noise complaints, they were found not to be just about that. Everything was done within our code from the times that those were. And in fact, last year, they actually requested or issued a case settlement for, for that. I don't think they probably needed it, but I'll put it as caution. So I just wanted to clarify that we have never had intent, nor did we shut, shut the event down. But there are some things that need to be met. Now I want to just go into real briefly some of the reasons on why, so someone will know. So this is an article, couple of articles, I just want to hold up, kind of give a little bit of background for everyone on why we're doing what we're doing. So what makes a haunted house hazard? So this is some information that's coming from online in a number of different places this week from reference from NFA. So Halloween is a pretty big event for a lot of people on it. And one of the things that happens with it is the biggest thing is fireworks. So haunted houses do special effects, scenery props, audio visual distractions. It may cause egress paths to become not obvious. And in haunted houses in particular, the presence of both home materials and special things, house fire should have fired occurred. Now this from the NFA, an article that they had written on this. And where the code's coming out on this is literally related to a fire that occurred in the community for, yeah, in a haunted castle in Dick's Lodge, where it ventured into New Jersey. Where eighteen injured or died during that fire. So one of the things that was really interesting on that fire, it actually went to court. And the court's rule, the company originally was a terrorist manor. The jury actually found him not guilty and put the blame instead on the city of Jackson Township, for not being able to do sort of fireworks. So that's kind of a little bit of background. Out of that is where came fire codes related to haunted houses. Both from fix and or temporary facts, if you're going to put a haunted house in, in the structure, if it has to be to bring in this particular building with fire and life safety code. So Oregon is, adopts, Oregon fire code adopts what they call the international fire code. And section Q of that code addresses haunted houses specifically. So those are things that have to kind of be met. We've had discussions with the owners about that and, you know, we can do things, we can do work with them to make sure those are met. It really takes planning and things out. It was one of the things we shared last year is moving forward after the fire and we were out there, car share with them that you need to have, it's required to have a commitment to be involved. So, so there may have been, it sounds like there may have been some miscommunications last year on a lot of events, to be sure enough. It is what it is, what happened on it. But when we became aware in July that it looked like it was going to move forward, we wrapped up the letter which they received. Outlining what needs to take place on that. And then needs to work. So next, let's go, the next one is talk a little bit about that. So some of the safety concerns with haunted houses, I'm just gonna hit it before we do what is there. Again, this is one of the things to talk about. Extra fuel of the haunted house, mark writing materials we need to do, go to display units, we have combustible and fire, head of fire load, we can have a fire. One of the things that's changed over the years, so a little bit of my background. I was in the fire service for thirty seven years, retired from Halloween two thousand eight, as fire chief. Seven years, red in California, research. In my thirty seven years, what we see in a fire situation has changed since. Most everything that we see today that's built, when I first started, primarily of natural fibers, natural wood products. Most of the things we see going in, in the use of structures and things, a lot of it today is composite, composite materials and things are highly flammable. So we see very reactive fire growth, heavy smoke and incandescent, we didn't experience thirty years ago. And those are a lot of things that are, and that's some of the things that contributed to the fire business back in the early days. So we talked about smoking protection, fire suppression, most haunted houses, and I think keep in mind, they're talking about here, it's in a fixed facility, a temporary. All of those being necessary commitments, sure, they have completed all their regulations. Out of the smoking protection purposes, all our corporations are a big concern with the basic of haunted house construction, basically without all the fire. Then egress, all visual operator attractions into the little house and secure path egress and how that occurs, reverse path through a haunted house can be a concern. Sometimes attractions in many places or other paths through that completely used to paper and saw, others used as train ride. So and that's, that's why you go on a house, you want to have, you don't want to know, you don't want to expect it's coming up for where you're at. That's one of the things in this regard. And then fire service access, move on to first, on to people, get to people, any of them, get to people, any of them. And this is concerned by exterior attractions as well as its layout. If the fire lanes around structure or area, if they can't get in it, aren't large enough for a response, see those little vans or your traction, kind of complex, not dynamic access, rescue efforts could be hammered. So not just rescue efforts, but also for urgency, getting hose lines back to the area, they need to get to protect those maybe and then quickly, quickly knock it down. So that's one of the things that was addressed when we talked about in the letter regarding the setback. For setbacks, the line can help we allow that area so that we can get hose line pulled and get people get in there. So that's one of these. And then this is another article from hauntedhouse.com, the company that does, that provides stuff. And again, same thing, we talked about fire, always see those design your own for the worst possible situation, where's the intersection, area of attraction with the fire. And egress, is there a emergency to your attraction? How do you get your guests anchored out of the road safely? How do we know where to go and how do we get people in? So one thing you have to keep in mind, we have some, we have people not only exiting, we also have crews needing to be getting back. So making sure you have adequate passing for that. So part of our setbacks in our code, by providing protection, primary protection from spread of fire to a living property. But also ensure that crews can get hose lines and stuff spread it back to birds and areas of property on it. So that's one of the things that we want to use. One of the things we talked about in this case, when this is, you know, there are things we could do, you know, committed to that. You know, the best was, maybe the setback, but the one thing we've had discussions on the phone, I had discussions with the boards. Some of the things that we could look at doing is moving that stuff and reducing it as long as they need. They're planning to use fire code, whatever they need to. By allowing it, they have agreement with the owners of the main property where they need to approach and have a, be a book for the whole fire team. As long as we got an agreement from them, from the, as long as it's settled out by risk and liability from, from the fire. And then by the access, that we're willing to, to do that in the future to accommodate, accommodate that. So that really addressed one of the things that we'll address in the letter from the city. The primary function, the most concerning concern is just a, meaning early to fire to, and it has an approved plan to be pulled on. And I, I think that can go on, we address, need to address the concerns with, with it being a charge for service. And that, that portion by information courses, so he even helped him, of that on there. So those were the, that is the main purpose is, is the life safety aspect of it, ensuring the safety of the people that are in any of that. So and now Matt talking briefly, I'm giving a brief overview of the, you know.
Yeah, from a land use perspective, it's a little bit more straightforward. We have a section of our code that allows home occupations, and that's essentially defined as, you know, a business that makes money. And up here on the slide, you can see I've got a snapshot of a flyer that we give out at the front counter that talks about home occupations. And the blow up here you see is a section of that flyer, and it just explains the different standards. If you want to do a home occupation in our city, you don't need any kind of permits at all, you can just go ahead and do it as long as you meet these standards you see here on the screen. And so just to walk through the, you have to have a main house on the property, clearly that's not a, a problem in this situation. As far as staff goes, you're not allowed to have any staff report to your house at all. And in an event like this, you would see a lot more staff showing up to help work the event. And then the third one, which is probably the most important, is that any kind of home based business can't change the character of the residential area that it's in. And that's why home occupations is more geared towards the attorney that works from home or the piano teacher that teaches one kid at a time at the house. Because it's a nice, soft, simple use that doesn't disrupt the, uh, character of the area or the neighborhood. And in this case, we felt that the, this project didn't meet that because it sets up a large scale operation. It also isn't supposed to be seen from the outside of the house. So if you repair cars, you can't do that at your house because people would have to see that up front and then they're seeing that home occupation, that changes the character of the area. Client contact, you're only limited to have one person at your house at a time, and this event draws hundreds, maybe thousands of people at a time. And then vehicles, clearly there's no conflict there, this, uh, um, operation doesn't need any kind of vehicles at all. And then the second part of the flyer, there just really says, what can't you do? And you can see kind of the idea behind the way the code was written when it came to home occupations. Nothing too noisy, anything outside can't be seen by the public. And it's, uh, the idea is to allow small home offices, hair cutting, piano lessons, things like that. And one of the things we put forward in the letter is that if you wanted to change the idea of this from a home occupation to just an event, then none of these standards would apply and that everything they're doing would be okay. So really, accepting an admission fee at the gate becomes the nexus issue. Now, could they request, could they request a donation? Absolutely, not a problem at all. And they could even give a suggested, requested donation fee or amount, I don't want to use the word fee. Okay, well, at any rate, they can make it a donation only and then it's fine. So as long as it's not something that's compulsory. And then that pretty much concludes my part of the presentation, Kevin. We have some links here, but that's.
So the, the fire code, so there's international building code, which Oregon adopts as Oregon specialty building. It addresses special, you know, buildings. We're not talking about that, anything that fires concern those businesses. So you can look at it, it's, this is given specifically, so it talks about general requirements, talks about the permit and then the general requirements that are required to be, being that. And from our standpoint, that is, that's a fire issue, we're more than willing to help work with the owners on that. The things that we can do, if, if, you know, not able to meet the full five fees, things we can do with, with that. The biggest things we have to make sure is that fire signs up on, on their plan, so that they have an adequate ingress and egress. So that's the primary. Now I just wanted to provide you an overview of what's transpired to this point. We did have discussions with the owners on Friday and today on that, unfortunately. And, you know, I just want to say, how did we realize sooner or later we got something to do? First, we became aware, I think, I think it was about three days, two or three days from kind of the first, we became aware. And back in July, we got, you know, some, some, back two years. So I think, you know, I don't see that there's any prohibition to the continuing as long as we meet those, those objectives. Another debt, there's the safety fire code, advise that. That doesn't affect, yeah, and we just come into the setback completely. And for studies, we're only court on the language that we need to be necessary. I think that we can do those things. And talking with them, you know, they're planning early in the year, so that would be something that we would put, say, that's a fire in there to discuss sometime in the spring, again, to make sure. That's ours, ours, our primary purpose of the panel is so just to ensure the safety. Once we became aware of the size of the thing. I, I will tell you, I know a lot of people that want three or four, five and a half, and that's, this. I think that's what, why there's so much interest in it, right, we saw. And there was a lot of work and effort on, and they're probably here as well. And there are things that just make sure it's safe to be, and.
What's the purpose of meeting tonight? Well, the reason that question has been pretty well laid out, what has occurred, what needs to occur and what support might be, so they wanted. Have they asked, has the public asked for this meeting to better understand our position?
We, we actually, in talking with Forrest, we said, you know, there was a lot of information out there, it wasn't, you know, as far as what had occurred or had not occurred. Talking with Forrest and said, you know, what's the best way, of course, to address this? We felt this would be a good one for us to look at, so we can make sure that everyone's on the same planet, getting across those issues. There may be something that's, you know, we can't change the part of it. Our code is, is, it's essentially, the city does have some control over, you know, some of the other areas, if the council still wanted to and was inclined to, to do that. On things with setbacks and, you know, and uses and things on that. So that was primarily the purpose was so that we could get the, you know, get the information out there, get what's actually.
Any other questions from the council for staff? Part of open it to public comment, I just remind that you have any questions or comments to come up to the stand here, state your name and street. We don't need to be able to address this street, and you've got three minutes to address the council. Anyone?
My name's Tom Isley, and I'm the next door neighbor. As far as fire access, there's a fence between this place and my place. And right now I have a trailer there in the wood and shed in the back that has at least a five and a half foot setback. But when they have their event, they can move all that over. And there can be at least a four, four five, clear access. As far as the fence goes, we can actually remove the six foot panel before the event, so if there's a fire, you don't have to remove it, you can just. I think that's an over.
And, and that's, that's appreciated. You know, and like I said, it's really comes down to the fire. And I did have some brief discussions with Laura, Laura Bracklitz, fire marshal. You know, those are things that they can get the adequate access, if they need for access and egress, and those are, can be moved to provide that, that is definitely something. Along with the form of force to look at. So that is some things that we'll be looking, talking about in the January. So it's helpful to know that you're, you're willing to.
Yeah, that's no problem. One other comment I could, I think it's very well organized. And there's, my bedroom is right next to it. And by ten o'clock, it would take five minutes to prove all.
So, yeah. And as I said, I think we have had maybe three over the, you know, four complaints that were, and every time that we looked at, there was nothing that was outside of what the city's. So if this is an issue, I yell. Honestly, that's what I'd like to see, you know, instead of, like, just write out your name.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe if, uh, if they do choose to proceed next year, which we're hoping they do, I will be reaching out, so as Kevin mentioned, probably in January, February. I'll have a, it's called a waiver, uh, which is allowing, you're saying that you're okay with us bringing the event closer within that five foot setback on their side? And if you're okay with that, and then you'll provide some ingress and egress on your side for emergency services.
Yes, okay. Very good. And if you're finding it doable, do it before, then it'll pair with some, probably, you know.
Okay, we travel a lot, so.
Okay, okay, very good, okay, very good, thank you.
If you don't mind, maybe we can put like between the two, you know, bring a little closer so that the recording. So last year, it was very informative when Matt and working, we had a big discussion about everything, the fire code, which is important. The thing for me was the land use, something like, um, I didn't respond, it was more, it's kind of bothered by it because it seemed aggressive. That too, in my home, I had a discussion visually or at the end term, so we got rid of that, right? So which one's I go, they're trying to shut down, my problem.
But the community came together and really threw some.
About it, so here we are again, come on. Big question is, is, when you say we're only using it as a home based business, but you can have a garage sale, where people come and they disrupt the front of their property and look crazy with tables and whatever to sell, so I, there's some apartment, I'm gonna make my money out of that.
And that's a business.
My, my sign was, hey, in the yard, you can walk in the backyard, why is that any different? So for me, it's, it's more about that. I think seven, I think it was, literally were kind of shut down because we were so narrow.
But in and out for people to come through, which we now can work through, so.
For me, it's just understanding, you know, the home based business portion of it versus anything.
Did you want me to speak then? I think the, the code has a different set of standards for garage sales, uh, that work on a completely different system. And the standard for garage sale are separate from the standards for a home based business, that's why we looked at those differently. I think it's also a question of scale, um, of the project, because a garage sale is much smaller and doesn't have that many people coming to it. And it's for a much shorter duration, as where, uh, an event like yours has, because it's so fantastic, it has thousands of people coming to it, which is great. But, uh, that, that's, that's the main distinction between the two.
Our code does have a provision that does not allow it.
Right, you're also not allowed to sell new items, uh, that are like mass produced at a garage sale. So somebody has made, you know, a widget and they've got forty widgets on a table, that's not allowed because that's a store.
I just can't understand how you guys, so when one's a home based business, that you're allowed to sell something in front of that and one, after doing that, you only figure on this. Mainly because the first couple of years we did it, it wasn't to this scale, obviously, and we were welcoming people, giving their hands out. But now, we're spending forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars to have fun, to scare people. Last year, we took fifteen thousand in donations, they didn't even cover one guy's labor for four months, so there's no money to be paid. Just on.
We turned around, donated to Cambridge Sports, we donated to Southbound West Office Sports, and the Boys and Girls Club as well, so, and some other things. But I also wanted to go into when I came and met with you after we had, you and the board against the property and visit with Dennis, I came to get the permit. I think there was some misunderstanding because when I, you told us, get rid of that five dollar fee. And, and I did, I, I took, and I changed the sign, I put that black toilet tape for it. And, um, but I think where I had a misunderstanding when I was visiting with you, you said that we could, um, we can accept, um, the donations and we could accept the five dollar donation, you know, and, you know, recommend that. I think that's where we got confused, like, we weren't trying to break the city's, um, rules on it. We were just, I think it was just confusion on how we were going about it, but, so I just wanted to make that.
I think you and I still believe that, hey, about that, the sign that would be appropriate, would you say donations welcome? And no suggested amount of this donation welcome, and we can put an arrow down, we just can't encourage or any, or in any way say we want to. And that bumps all the way back into the comedy of it.
And we have, we, we, we've always done donation, that's, I mean, we can see that anyone ever have these signs that people were coming and donating. So they're like, we know, well, we can only imagine how it's just been, you're doing this just for fun, and it is just for fun. Last year with all the wood and the wood prices, um, that's where like, oh, no, you know, why have it? Because we do, we do at that point with the fire code, we hadn't talked about it earlier yet, but Dennis, um, started with the contract, you know, contractor. In as far back as we were going and as deep as we're going on the property with the vesting we're using, we start eliminating that, building the wood, you know, building wood walls to be in compliance, but.
One of the, one of the things I might add, and Laura's not here, so that could be some good, ask the, one of the things I think that we have to be aware of also, the whole is, once you start charging. They're looking more, it's looking more as a business venture at that point. So right now, you know, you're not meeting, not having to meet. So for us, as a business or any house of property, it's, you know, you're either zone, it's a, to be out and see or an assembly shop, depending on where people are coming from. So that could potentially change how fire and assembly get, but that, with that charge, um, because now it's not just a neighborhood, you know, it's an event, an event. And that's really, I think, where it changes, is when you have that, that charge changes from that event. And then there's that question, and that could change some things as far as what happens to take place when you guys, how it's constructed. Where we're talking about, you know, where other places are doing these things, where they have to do, so. So those are some of the things that come to play, and really to be honest with you, what caught everyone's attention last year was when the signs were going up, um, with, with the charge. That changed how it was, how it was used, it was diffusive, more of just a, a neighborhood event, you know, people, people were aware of. So that's really what kind of prompted that, right, from our, to, to. And I know there was a.
Early launch line on, it's in the ballpark, if it's fire went by, probably.
Because we're buddies, we're exchanging graphics, so.
So.
And so, yeah, so he actually made that sign for us.
So going forward for this year, we definitely made some changes, but we got a lot of, um, input from, actually about people and the shit, trying to get immediate access to the mall. So we definitely made provisions to allow that, so it's getting wider, for people to come through. Um, we did purchase some, we did insurance, obviously, for duration, so that probably just a hundred million dollars for an incident, if something was to happen. So we definitely made some changes, and that's us, and save, um, something worth to hire, so.
So then it's.
Purchased, purchased, and saved as an additional.
Sure.
We didn't know, needed to believe that.
And, and thank you, if I could just briefly comment, I appreciate, it's not our ten dollar issue. A media's attorney, I'm always the bad guy, and that's where I get complaints, but I told you, is that if the city comes aware that there are some potential issues, and five of them were, one of them is not, I have a fire code. And the fire code is not anything that we can make, it's the state of the board and fire, they're gonna, they really need to comply with it. And if, for example, we find out that we're not compliant, and I say, oh, city, let's let them go ahead and do that, and then, you know, something, tragedy happens. They're gonna be pointing the finger at the council, and the council will be pointing the finger at me.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be like, you're part, and so that's the reason why, we just, we, we wanted. And so that's the reason why, we just, we want your event to be, I mean, it's great. I hear about it all the time. We just need to make sure, just like any business, and that's the thing. Don't want to shut the...
We own a property, major business and construction business and another. We've got three businesses that we run, and so we totally get it. We understand. And, you know, we want the safety for, as we were saying, I put the city for ourselves. But if you have really awesome neighbors and you have one that's sitting off either, you know, being disrespectful, you know.
But unfortunately for this year, we have to, we're trying to meet requirements without communicating with the company. Should have, we need to let them know, we'll replace, I know they'll take the bill, so we can make that happen. Moving forward, very important one, for the city to make sure that things are placed in that manner.
Yeah. Great, and then we'll just, you know, I will leave, I got Mr. Hayes's contact. Well, I'll need his contact information, then your other neighbor. And then I'll work on some releases and we'll get that done, whatever you're ready to get that stuff.
And I spoke with the other neighbor earlier today, and he says he does not have a problem with it. He said, you know, agreed with the fence, you know, if we had to take out a section. Said he never told it, part of it, that they couldn't come do their, he's more than happy to have.
I'm hopeful eventually, you probably, when I create this release, perhaps I know that I could come out there and say, this is what you might take out, not, you know, then I could prepare that piece around that, make sure it's...
In what form do you want, because I have a... I would, that's really going to qualify it. That's really more of ours, honestly. She's going to want to have something that she can be able to tell where, make sure you have that exit or those are, to make sure that, you know, you have, as a whole, you insist to those areas for egress and access forbidden.
You see, we actually have exit signs, like we were there, and so we actually replace them. Where the exits, we want to know that that's an exit. So that's good, and then also, you know, we did purchase more than what Laura wanted this part. As far as state research, we think exactly where she wanted them, that we, we've gotten more just so we had a better safety story.
And I, I know some of the things that are in sections, you know, for sure, talk about training and stuff. So, and I know fire people only have to help you with, with that as well, you know, so for the longevity.
And see, that's the other thing is, we don't have...
Like, we bring our employees, yes, off out of the construction side of our business and the maintenance side of our business, they go out there and we pay them to help build. But everybody that's participating and dressing up literally anywhere between 42 and 50 people a night are all along to his friends that love us and, you know, dress up. So this number, he helped, you know.
Many veterans are there too. At all times, some combat veterans or EMTs and stuff like that, all the time. So I mean, that's one good thing there too, so that's a big safety thing we always have. And now we want things that Laura can work on is just to make sure that the training so that those people know, you know, so that there is something now, how is it communicated? So you can make sure it's out safely. And those are all things that are there, I'm sure. And if you need that, I'm sure she will print off a copy of that portion for us as well. My last question would be the last one.
Oh, no, 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 nothing like that. No, that was primarily just for the land use and the admission fee. We wanted to be sure that the way that was approached in front of the house was met properly. That's all I meant. No, 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 no. Grab a hammer, help us out.
And I think...
Right, right.
I'm glad you knew where you're coming from though.
Yeah. We don't want to, it's a great adventure to see, you know, it's just...
So we were really surprised how many private messages we were seeing, people, it was just hundreds and hundreds of people. And I think the thing about the Facebook is, is if you read through our posts, I hope you could see it on, I think it was Lower Spur Neighbors, but we, or maybe it was the related one. But it found there very clearly that we weren't told that we couldn't do it. There was just a bunch of requirements kind of last minute for, as far as we're building those. And we just, we're going to try again for next year type thing. But people started to run away with their words and stuff and words, you know. So that, I just wanted to make clear, we didn't, you know, we never said, listen, he said we can't do this or that. I think it's just that people start doing that, start talking. But there's a lot of people that love it, don't want to go away. And then I jokingly said, then no more Christmas, no more kind of grizz wall. And they're like, huh, no, what about the single leather box? Because, I mean, Channel 6 was even out there, somebody even sent them a message, and they were out there. And so we had Tiny in his, the Grinch outfit and, you know, a Cindy Boo Boo, little four-year-old. But anyways, we like weird fun things. And we did, we made a Grinch, we canceled our anniversary trip. And because one of the girls, I think Carly and Heidi, asked us to participate in the parade. And we canceled our anniversary trip. And we built in two weeks an awesome Grinch float and pulled it to the can. I think we even went out and purchased, I think, almost $3,000 in Wilson Parish. So we could drive it to Canham on the streets instead of Palter. So I think we're good for the, for the city. And we're not rule breaker, explaining these, but no, we're not, we're not. And that's why we kind of wanted, we're happy that it was, we just had a meeting and tell us, you know, we're going to go and the fee thing, like, it totally was a misunderstanding, you know. We said we could take a $5 donation and that. So, I mean, it wasn't like, we're like, oh, yeah, we're just going, I can do it anyways. That's, you know, not...
I guess just to be inclusive, yeah?
Yes, yeah.
Does it make sense now that we've had this dialogue and discussion, I mean, does it make sense where we're having them come, or I have them come, or you people out there, does that, does it kind of make sense? Or not, do you think that we're overbearing? Or just having to comply with the law and put down a...
It makes sense, but I think that the whole $5 thing doesn't, from the Grange is doing it. And, you know, I, we understand who Grange is, we understand. That's the one part that we didn't really fully understand, I don't think. I mean, if you ask me if I agree with it, I say no, but I understand. We've never charged a fee before, that wasn't a thing, and that was just because of the wood prices and that sort of thing. But we do understand where you come from, we understand, you know, everything that...
Well, something like that, so that, you know, can always be brought up before the council or before the planning commission. And then the city planning code can be amended and brought before the council for that to occur. But just note that once that does open, all kinds of people start to be, oh, here's how I can expand that area. And I can expand that, and then next thing, you don't know what's going to be happening. Yeah, that's right. But planning council is certainly open to that. You just have to think, how far can you go? But we certainly do that.
We love the city, we love this little city. And, you know, we bought our house, we had almost half an acre, we put it in ground pool and wood shop, and just made kind of our, like, our little oasis back there. And we love it, and we love everything that's about, all the, how the cities have, you know, everybody's yards, everything, even though there's not H8s in place, we still, everybody keeps everything so nice. And we, we're proud to live here. So it's definitely something that we don't want, you know, to have anything, you know. Even like you said, bottom shop with the next door, you know, that's not what we're going for. But we like to have fun. And now that we know, how many people, we've known for a few years, how many people love it. We get stopped in our driveway, you're not building yet. And that's what kind of stuns us. People are like, why aren't you building yet? What's going on? The city, the neighbors rock those.
I would, I would mention the Grange, they do follow the state fire. And they actually have, did expect the trails to go to state fire market following some analysis. So when the party drove, they drove them out, it started to be all the fire. But it sounds like theirs is pretty static. So it sounds like, I believe everything there would have, you know, there is a distinct program.
I was really surprised, we went in there first time because we just wanted to check it out. But, you know, a really dark room, you don't see, you can't see nothing, there's no lights. And I literally had to latch on to him, he was in front, to try to see. But I was like, man, I couldn't imagine trying to go through that without some sort of little light, you know, there's a flashlight, but, but then, yeah, that's fun, you know, so. Well, thank you, appreciate everybody's time.
Any further public comment?
We do have one person online. I shot them a chat to see if they wanted to speak, but they didn't say anything.
No further public comment, that's section. After this special work session, the council adjourned an objective session in accordance to ORS 192.6602E or 192.6602H. Any other notifications that we need to bring to this special session? During that, we're adjourned.